Good evening, welcome to the Pullman City Council meeting for this January 11th. The first council meeting of the new year, and we'd like to welcome two new council members, Megan Guido, Frances Benjamin, to the council, and by me in the next half hour or so, 45 minutes, we'll have a third council member on board tonight. With that, Dee, would you please take a roll?
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Benjamin.
President.
Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
President.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Under announcements tonight, I'm going to make them from a podium over here, because we first want to present to our two former council members. Brandon, if you'd come up here, and Dan Records. Both of them have served the city very well. We appreciate their service. And first of all, Dan, we'll present you with this plaque that recognizes your service here as council member for Ward Two from January 2018 to December 2021. If you'd like to make some comments, please do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dan.
Well, I didn't prepare anything, but I just want to say, I really enjoyed my time serving the city of Pullman and working with each and every one of you that I've had the pleasure and opportunity to work with. When I came on the city council, there was a lot of challenges the city was facing, and that also represented a lot of opportunities. And I like to see the direction that we've all come together in trying to make the city of Pullman a better place. And we haven't always agreed on everything, but we've always found a way to listen to each other and try to find a solution and work forward. And I know that the city council members that have started on city council tonight, both in Frances and Megan, that that will be a tradition that continues. And so I look forward to seeing the good things that you're able to do. Thank you.
Again, Dan, thank you again for your service. Brandon, I know one of the statements you made when you said you're not going to run for the second term was "family considerations," and it's great to have your entire family here. So, recognize this from January 2018 to December 2021, your service to the city. Thank you so much for all your great work. And, the mic is yours. Now, we might have to put a time limit on you. Just want to make sure everybody knows that.
That is a danger, Mayor. Yeah, no, when I was first coming on to council and I saw folks have a few last words leaving council, I kind of wondered what would I say if, you know, if and when that day comes. And I've just had a lot of thoughts on my mind, but primarily, it's one of gratitude. My family moved here eight and a half years ago, a little less than eight and a half years ago, and we did it because we, my wife and I love Pullman. And I know it's not meant as a backhanded compliment, but I did tell coworkers at WSU that I did not come here for the job, I came here for Pullman, and then proceeded to look for a job, and WSU had a great one open. But we did come here for quality of life, and I thought about wearing something nicer tonight, but I had this hoodie, and it says "Pullman Proud." And we have that as a license plate on our Suburban, and another iteration of that on my truck. And I really do love Pullman with all my heart. I want to thank my family, of course, and each and every one of these council members who I've gotten to know and been in the trenches with. And there's just something about service, about raising your hand and saying you're going to do it. And I know I've been no supporter of uncontested elections, but the thing is, that's not about anybody who's had those uncontested elections, because for each one of us, we raised our hand, and the, you know, there's that poem about the man who's actually in the arena, and I consider it a huge honor to have been in those fights with you. Some pretty heated, and I am better because of each one of you. And I really appreciate our staff. I've had the ability to work with, you know, a couple city administrators, Adam Lincoln and Mike Urban, and then the Tuesday night crew, Dee and Rob and Rob, who spend that time to be away from their families. And I'm really excited about the direction of Pullman. I know our department heads and other staff are just top-notch, and so I look forward to seeing what will come of this great city, and to all four tonight who are vying for this other city council position. You're already winners for raising your hand and being willing to do this. So, thank you, and this will go somewhere prominent in my home office. I appreciate it.
Do you want to introduce your family?
I would love to do that. My wonderful wife, Sarah, we just celebrated 20 years of marriage, so, for reasons passing all understanding, she stayed with me for 20 years. My oldest son, Sterling, who's, he lowered his head, because who wants, as a teenager, their dad to introduce them? So Sterling is a senior, Hyrum is a freshman, Jonah is in seventh grade and at Lincoln Middle School, and then James is 10 and at Franklin Elementary. My mother-in-law is sitting right in between Chief Heston and Hyrum, and she also is elected official. She's the hospital commissioner. Thank her for her service, so, thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Now, in other announcements tonight, the Neil Public Library and Alternatives to Violence to the Palouse have partnered to bring to the community the Resilience Resource Shelf. You can visit New Shelf and find reading recommendations, wellness information, and other useful resources. You can stop by Pullman Winter Market this Saturday, January 15th, from 10 until 2:00. Locally harvested and handcrafted goods to share for the winter season, located at the Brawlsford WSU Visitor Center. If you want to get the Christmas tree taken out, help the Scouts this Saturday, January 15th, the Scouts will be there to pick them up. You can call for more information to Paul Wheeler at (432) 3659. That's (432) 3659. Or visit pullmanscouts.square.site. Palouse Discovery Science Center is hosting Family Science Night at the Discovery Center in Pullman. You can join to learn about health and wellness for all ages, free to attend, masks required. I never wonder what it was like to be a police officer. Well, now you can catch a glimpse of what it's all about. Pullman PD and the Police Advisory Committee invite members of the public to attend the Pullman Police Citizens Academy. You can visit pullman.wa.gov to apply. And again, there's been a number of our council members, I know I went through the Citizens Academy a number of years ago, but the people just brag about it, you just went through it recently. And I know it's really a good lesson for all of us to learn all the different challenges that police officers have to go through. With that, that concludes our announcements. Our next item on the agenda tonight is to interview and select Ward Two city council members. So we have four particular candidates that will be here. At this time, we ask you to come up, you'll see your nameplate, and sit down at the nameplate. One mic for two, we'll share, and I'll give you some rules later on. We ask you to turn the nameplate towards us once you've found your seat, and then we'll go from there. That's the first test to make sure you turn your nameplate. That's the easy one. All right. So what we're going to do tonight, council has a number of questions, and we're going to go through, and we'll ask one question, and all four of you will answer it. We're going to limit you to two minutes, no more than two minutes to respond, because we have a number of questions, and we have a number of things on the agenda. And then, the next council member will ask a question. We'll start with, for example, we're going to start with Melissa, and the next question will start with Bill, and then finally Rebecca and Garin. So each one of you get the first question. We don't want to make sure that somebody always gets the last one, and they have a chance to think about it that much, okay? So, with that, again, for those who are viewing tonight, we have Garin Shannon, Rebecca Dubin, Bill Whitman, and Melissa Emerson, all have applied for the Ward Two position. And the process tonight will be asking questions. After we've asked a number of questions, then we will go into executive session, and the council will discuss positives and negatives on each candidate, and then we'll come out here and make a motion to who the candidate will be. And then at that point, we have Dee ready to swear that person in, not swear at, swear you in, and then you'll take a seat up here at the council deus, and you'll be here for the night. And we've got a really long agenda to it. No, no, we're under control. So with that, we'll go to our newest council member, Megan Guido, who'll ask the first question. And again, all of you will be answering that question. Okay?
All right. Well, thank you for being here, and I'm going to start off with a pretty broad question. What do you view as the responsibilities of a council member?
First of all, make sure that mic is on where you have a green light. And should it be on, I can answer that question.
What do you view as the responsibilities of a council member?
I think the responsibilities of the council member are to, you know, listen to the people in your ward, to get a good idea of what their concerns are, and to best represent those while also, you know, helping to, you can't, you know, give everyone what they want, you still have to do what's best for the city and what's best for the community. And I think being able to, you know, listen to those concerns, to approach them, you know, in a diplomatic way where we can best serve the community and also serve the city, because, you know, they have different needs, but the more people that we can listen to and the more people that we can, you know, help and facilitate, you know, by having a smooth working environment of our city and the infrastructure of our city, you know, be it the roads and the lights, or, you know, the noise, I think just being able to make as many people happy as possible while helping our city continue to run as smoothly as it can.
Okay, I have to agree. I think it's the leadership group that helps the administrative body of the city function well, and of course, we're going to be the ear of the community, hopefully we will be, and be able to provide input to the council and any decisions that have to be made here at the council level. I think it's a pretty awesome responsibility, because it's a large, nice, very diverse community, and so I think it's difficult to take all of those things into consideration as a leadership group for the community, to make sure that you address all the issues that come out. I read the papers and listen to the radio, and I hear all this stuff that happens, and it's pretty interesting, and it's exciting, it's a little scary, but I think basically it's an awesome responsibility, and the council does provide the leadership for the rest of the community, make sure that it functions well.
So, I would agree with all of that about listening to the constituents, but I think also to the other council members, and I think it goes a little bit beyond just listening. I think it's a little bit more active than that. Like, definitely, I think a council member needs to be present when a citizen steps forward and wants to talk about something, but I think it's also kind of incumbent upon the council members to reach out to the communities, to hear from them, and to listen deeply, but also to educate. I think sometimes it's easy to kind of be at home and read something in the paper or hear something from the council and think, wait a minute, shouldn't it be like this? And I think it's also part of a council member's duty is to communicate to the citizens who raise those concerns, what some of the constraints are, and other considerations that the city has. And then finally, I think what is council member's responsibility is, is to represent the citizens such that the citizens feel like they are part of the city government. That's how I see the world.
So, ditto what they said. City council is an engagement piece, and each city council member has to engage in the city and the community. Inclusivity is part of that sense of belonging. Our job is to make sure that people belong and feel belonging. To represent that sense of belonging means to care for the community that you live in and you work with. We also have a fiduciary responsibility. We want to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollar, and be cognizant that every cent and penny spent is done right and just. Obviously, communicating with your community and the folks around you is an important part, but being active in it as well, it's not just about talking, it's about being a part of things, and engaging in every part that you can that fits your needs and your desires for your community.
Bill, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitman, please share with us what diversity, equity, and inclusion mean to you and why they are important.
Okay, I'm going to ask you, just to repeat that, because it's difficult with the mask.
I know. Please share with us what diversity, equity, and inclusion mean to you and why they are important.
The diversity for me is this community, I always told my children when they were growing up, I said, you know, Pullman is not the real world. We literally had friends from all over the world, from all walks of life, every religion and color and background that you can imagine, and you just don't find that in many other communities, that, you know, they're kind of separate, you know, kind of have their own little identity, I guess. But in Pullman, that's not the case. I mean, this is a pretty wonderful place. I've lived here about 60 years now. And the inclusion part is that everyone is part of the community. Everyone makes the community. Everyone brings something to the community. And that's one of the things that I also like about Pullman is because we have that great opportunity to learn from other folks. So, let's see, I got two of them, right? Diversity, inclusion.
Equity.
And what?
Equity.
Oh, and equity. Gosh, you know, I'm starting to get confused anymore between equality and equity and those things. Now, you know, I've always felt that everyone should be on the same level as far as how you approach them and how they approach you, and
We've got about 15 seconds left.
Everyone has an equal opportunity, hopefully, and it's made available to them in everything that they pursue. And to put a little bit of
And I think, Bill, your time is up right now.
Okay. I think you're in a win.
Rebecca, next question, answering that question, please.
Thank you. I think, I think we're going to make a mistake if we believe that Pullman is going to be the same city it is now in five years. I think it's radically different than the city it was in 2017. I look at some of the incidents that have come up recently, some of the controversies, I think of the Black Lives Matter mural, and I think of the Jefferson portrait in the library just recently, and I don't think those are one-offs. I actually think we're going to see that increase, especially with the downtown Pullman Association, the master plan, the airport. I think we're going to see Pullman continue to grow and to become more diverse, and I think either Pullman is ready for that, we have a way for people to speak their minds and to feel a part of the community, or we're kind of not, we're kind of caught off-guard. I think that diversity, equity, and inclusion is important, because it gives a voice to the citizens. We are Pullman. When I think about standing on the sidewalk on Main Street and going into Neils to buy a special, unique gift that I really can't find anywhere else for my nephews, I sometimes wonder what that would be like if instead of standing on that sidewalk, I were in a wheelchair. And this is not against Neils or anyone else, it's just that how does one move in a wheelchair? Here we are in a city of the best-intended people, a city I loved dearly, and we need to be able to serve all of the people. So, I think diversity, equity, and inclusion is important, because it is who we are, either we include all of our citizens or we don't. I do think I bring a few skills to that. One is facilitation, I am a trained facilitator. Another is I have extensive work with
And 10 seconds left.
Thirty?
10 seconds.
10. Yes, thank you.
And we asked some of the people in the back, say they can't hear very well, so please move the mic a little bit closer to you. Okay, thank you.
So, I happen to be reading a book right now on building a culture of inclusion through dignity and belonging, and part of the challenge with building programs like this is that there's a lot of lip service that's paid to equity programs or diversity programs that we do a lot of action and whatnot, but we don't include a belonging model that feels, that makes people feel like they are welcome in a program or a community. This is a program we're going through with the school district right now to build a culture that people feel like they belong in, and in a world that they belong in, they are going to succeed and they're going to excel. The diversity comes with that belonging. The problem is, is that how do we identify where they don't feel like they belong when we have language and discussions where we have to exclude a group or a people because we have contention in the city and we don't reach out to those people and make them feel welcome and include and welcome and included, so that they belong to our city, we're not doing them a service. So, diversity, inclusivity, and equity, without belonging, you can't give them equity, that you can make them, you know, you can have access to it, but they're really not going to succeed. So, we do need some work there. I know that there's a pretty big chasm between those who feel like they belong here and those who don't, and that's an area we can, I think, work on. Let's put it this way, it's not who we are, it's who we want to be. This is not who we want to be yet. We're doing a good job, but we're not there yet.
Right at two minutes, okay. Melissa, you're answering that question.
Diversity, equity, and inclusion. Okay. You know, I agree with a lot of these points, and I don't know, I would like to really touch on something Becky talked about, and that was the accessibility. You know, we talk about inclusion, we went and followed all the ADA rules and put in our expensive ramps to get up at all the downtown intersections, and you can't get more than 10 feet on a downtown sidewalk because they're so unlevel. Everyone I know with a wheelchair, crutches, any kind of mobility disability can't go downtown. They literally have to leave our town. That's an issue, when our citizens can't just go and park and walk inside. And I think that we need to, you know, when we talk about being inclusive, you know, we really tend to think about the cultural, you know, the cultural inclusivity, but there are a lot more levels than that, and on some of them, we really do fail, and I think that we need to address those. I think that diversity is so important, because homogeneity is so boring. It's boring, you know? It betters our life and our children's lives to have more people around us, to have more ideas and, you know, more exciting things to see and learn about, and I think that Pullman has an absolutely fabulous foundation for it. I've lived in other places, one of them was in Utah, and it's amazing to me how much more there is here. You know, we have different churches and different holidays and so many different exciting things that we have, and I think just really building on that as a community is something that, you know, we can really excel at, because I feel like we're an open-minded, loving bunch of people who have our own beliefs, but really revel in learning about other people's ideas and seeing them, and, you know, and I think that diversity is really important, just to have, you know, a broader knowledge of the world, but I think it really does help everyone fit in and feel like they belong here in a
Your time is up, all right. Nathan, you start out, and the first one we'll answer will be Rebecca.
Thank you. Rebecca, this is one that's kind of off of the sample, but I think it's okay, appreciate the sample questions. What is your definition of a public servant versus a politician, and its importance to being on city council?
That's a great question. I have to tell you that I would not be applying for this position if Dan Records were staying, that this to me is service, and I imagine it is for the rest of the council, the members I've spoken to, that this is a lot of hard work, and it's not about ego, it's not about a politician trying to promote a career or gain something, it's about giving back to a community that I think all of us recognize have given so much to us, and realizing that we have a debt that we need to pay, not just to the people who have provided for us, but to continue to provide that for people who cannot yet gain what we have. You know, I was saying before, I'm a trained facilitator, and I have done a lot of DEI work at the college, at Boylan College right now, where we're implementing some DEI initiatives, and I think that kind of service, that is, that's really, and I think one of the reasons Dan recommended me, is to make sure that we are serving all of the people of Pullman. And that's the difference to me, I guess, I guess for me too, in part, politician has something of a negative connotation, and service to me is very humble, very giving position. Thank you.
I think service is a way of life. Service is caring for your community, for your neighbor, and being there when your community needs you. It doesn't require a position, it just requires your time. And so, from a service perspective, I've been doing this all my life, in one way or another, for the last 14 years at the Linto Festival, for example. That is service. A politician is the other side of that coin, it is still a service, but it is the ability to be able to balance your maybe personal desires against the needs of a city that may work in conflict, and finding a better balanced and equitable answer for people. So, service is something that you can do all the time, but politicians are a learned skill. I think I'll leave it at that.
This is a tricky question. To me, the difference, the difference between a politician and a public servant, is that the gist of this question?
Yeah, sorry, there was sample question, but this is one that I just, I'll just reiterate exactly, is I, what is your definition of a public servant versus a politician, and its importance to city council?
Well, I think politicians are beholden to the next vote, and for me, that's the biggie. I, even if I were chosen tonight, which I have no illusions about being chosen, but I think that for me, it would really be just to serve out this term, because I'm not a person who I fancy throwing myself into a ring and putting up campaign signs around town. That takes a politician. A politician is looking forward to the next election. What choices do I make now that will serve me, that will allow me to continue to serve in the future? So, a politician can be a public servant, but that isn't always what the bottom line is, because a politician, I feel like oftentimes, is looking forward to the next election, whereas a public servant is spending their energy focusing on the issue at hand and trying to serve the community regardless of the future. Vote.
Public service, I have a little Public service, I have a little experience in that area. And I look upon it as, as being there for your neighbor and your neighborhood and your community, and helping to make it function and be safe and friendly and welcoming. And it can be in many forms. I've been compensated for my public service and I've held many positions in the region and in the state in volunteer positions with the American Heart Association, with Boy Scouts and those types of things. And those are all giving of myself to try to help others, to try to help the organization function and try to make it so that it's available for other folks. This is as close as I've ever been to being a politician. And, and I don't think that if I were to get appointed to the position, I would consider myself a politician. I don't know if that's good or bad, but I'd rather think of myself as being a service or providing a service for the community.
Okay. Garen, you get the first question from Eileen.
I think it's been about three years ago now, the city hired the consulting firm of BDS to put together a downtown master plan for us. What do you like about it? What you don't like about it? Please be specific.
The, the.
The downtown master plan.
The downtown master plan?
Yeah.
So, as you know, I, I spent six years on the Polling Planning Commission and worked extensively with Pete Dickinson and the, and the rest of the members of the commission. And downtown has always been a challenge. The biggest challenge that we had for downtown, of course, was, is traffic. It's an unsafe place at times during the year. And obviously, traffic remediation in the plan is good. We need better parking down there. I like the plans that I've seen in the, in the parking. The Downtown Association, while it's not part of the, the master plan, is, is a, an active function that I think is going to improve downtown as well. You know, the, the changes for, I'm trying to recall some of the details, but it has been a while since I have looked at the plan, so I'm going to leave it at that.
Will you, will you repeat the last part of the question, Eileen?
What do you think of the downtown master plan as the city has put it together? And what do you like about it? What you don't like about it? And please be specific.
You know, I would be lying to you if I said I was entirely familiar with the whole thing. I've seen, you know, I went to meetings for a while. I have heard a lot of ideas. I am not entirely familiar with it. I don't know that it's been particularly well presented beyond, you know, a link or two I've seen on Facebook. I know that definitely something needs to be done. I know that I agree with the points that Garen talked about as far as the traffic. You know, there's definitely some revisions we need to make, you know, to revitalize. We need, parking needs to be addressed. I, I know that, that they have a lot of great ideas that, that people see as a, as a positive, but I, I would be remiss if I were to tell you that I was familiar with all of the points of, of their suggestions.
Okay, I have to admit that I'm not well versed in the, in the master plan either. I'm aware of it, and I recall some of the aspects of, of the ideas of the plan, but, but I'm not well versed in it at all. Understand that it's a great challenge, and especially in today's world, the last couple of years has made it even more difficult. I can't imagine trying to be a business person downtown right now. And there's all the factors that have been discussed already this evening. Mobility factors, just getting up and down the sidewalks and, and traffic issues, and, and the availability of various types of businesses. In 1967, when I graduated from Pullman High School, there was three or four clothing stores downtown and about six restaurants, full-sized restaurants downtown. I shouldn't tell you how many bars there were, but there were quite a few of those too. But anyhow, it was, it was a vibrant downtown community. Of course, that was in the late 60s, and that's when malls and all that started happening. And so everybody started going to the malls, and it was really hard on downtowns everywhere. So I understand the challenge of trying to have a vibrant downtown. And I know it's something that the council needs to participate with.
I think it's brilliant. I love it. There's very little that I don't like about it. I love slowing the traffic on Main Street. I think two lanes is, is brilliant. The ideas for Paradise Street going the other way and potentially being two-way streets or one lane on Paradise. I love the art walk. I could actually go on quite a bit. I love it a lot. But I don't just love the plan. I love the way it's been done. The reverse in angle parking, when I first saw, I was like, there is no way that's going to be popular. And of course, it wasn't. But the way that the city did it, I thought was exceptionally insightful. To do it as a trial over the summer, to begin to give people the idea, oh, wait, Pullman's changing. And instead of just saying, this is the way we're parking now, we actually, we actually kind of got a real-life taste of that. I love the master plan. I, I think it's brilliant, and I'm hopeful that I can be a part of the council in bringing that to be. I do think, though, that it focuses on the physicality of downtown and not the people. I'm not a city planner, but I think we have, we have that covered. But I have served on Parks and Rec Commission for a number of years. And one of the things I know is that the Parks and Rec are not about the equipment. It's just not. It's about the people and the connections that happen there. And I think the same is true for downtown Pullman. I think how we begin to envision that place where everyone feels a member of the community, that's the part I think that we need to bring forward. I've been talking to Dan a lot. And I do think, for example, a DEI commission or committee, someone to, to advise the city about how to make everyone feel included.
About 10 seconds.
Would be kind of the next step. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Pat, you have the next question, and it goes back to Melissa with the first answer.
Perfect. I just wanted to thank all of you for your interest in submitting an application. As you all have kind of articulated, this is a very important position, and we appreciate the time and commitment that you willing to give to that. The other thing that I want to say before I ask my question is, I feel like I will be evaluating all of your responses in the context of our 2021 adopted goals, as well as thinking about the different priorities that Dan Records has articulated and has been an advocate for, and how all of your responses may fit into that broader, overreaching area. So not just about this question, but I'm going to be thinking about that in terms of all of the other questions that have been asked. So having said that, and who's, who's first? I'm sorry.
Melissa.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. In your experience, could you tell me about a time when you've had to navigate discussion between or among peers or colleagues with differing opinions, and how you managed to gain consensus among those groups?
I was a bartender for at least a decade. That's something I'm actually really good at. I've also, you know, worked in restaurants and things for a long, long time. So I'm used to loud people with opinions that don't match each other, sometimes having drank too much, sitting next to each other, wanting to scream about it. I, I come from, I don't know, a place where I feel like a lot of argument and a lot of issues that people have with each other, particularly in today's world, is because people aren't listening to each other. You hear one buzzword or one key word, and people lock in on that and assume that the other person has, you know, entirely opposing views and entirely opposing everything. And when people stop and learn, and then just stop and really break down and listen to each other, I think that, you know, by pointing out and finding the common ground that people share, you can really steer people to realize that in a lot of ways, they aren't on opposing sides. They, they have similar views and they've come to different conclusions, but you really have to focus on what people have in common. And that is how, in my experience, you can best diffuse the situation, is by finding the agreement and expanding on that, instead of focusing on, you know, the one or two outlying things that make people think that they're nothing alike.
Conflict resolution, like between my children, that type of thing. I, I've had some experience over the years in law enforcement, and I was a reserve officer for the city of Pullman for a couple of years, and with the fire service and EMS and working with the hospital and emergency preparedness. So there's issues that come up, and a lot of times when it's a, a pretty exciting moment, there can be differences of opinion, but you still have to get to a common area where you can have some agreement and you can identify what the problem is and move forward. I think one of the most important things is that you make sure that everyone has an opportunity to voice what their opinion is, and that you clarify what their opinion is. The active listening concept of, they, they tell you something and, and you either repeat it back to them or you confirm what they told you, so that the whole group can know. And then the other thing is to include all the people that are participating. A lot of times, people will have a very strong opinion, but they're afraid to talk or too angry to talk, or, or don't want to go against whatever the group is. And so sometimes you have to go out and, and encourage them to provide input into the process. So anyhow, bottom line is, you know, be an active listener, participate with the group, make sure that everyone has an opportunity to voice what their opinion is, identify what the problem is, and identify what the resolution for that problem is. So you might not all agree, but at least you can agree on what, what the problem is and how you're going to try to resolve it.
I think it's important to recognize that sometimes when we're in conflict, it's not necessarily a bad thing, but an opportunity to understand better each side and to create something new. So I, I mentioned earlier, I completed a facilitation course a number of years ago. It was a year-long course. We met for long weekends. We did homework on the side. And then we would go out to the communities and facilitate. And so I brought that back to my work. I do a lot of that in my job. So, for example, and I'm just going to keep this really hypothetical, there might be, for example, among the very talented and wonderful faculty at Washington State University, some faculty members who are kind of reading off of yellow notes from 1985 every time they walk into class. There might be a couple. And when those faculty members are approached with the idea that we're losing women, students of colors and other, students of color and others, because it's kind of a very, very traditional way that they're teaching, a lot of times their hackles can rise because they feel like, no, I'm being rigorous. You're asking me to be less than rigorous to allow more people in. So a lot of conversations happen outside of necessarily the conflict with a lot of deep listening. Like that faculty member who wants to protect rigor, I, I'm on board with them. Yes, that's what we're here for, is for the rigor, absolutely. But I'm also with the diversity, equity, inclusion, because we're also here for the inclusion. So what we do is we consense, which is not to agree necessarily. We're not looking for agreement, but we're looking for a place where we can all say, that idea is a reasonable interpretation of reality. I can get behind it. So not necessarily that we agree, we're not giving up anything, but we're creating something new. So I would want to meet with people who are in conflict to find out, to do that deep listening that's been mentioned, and to find out what they really want. What if, for example, we can create that?
And your time is up.
Thank you so much.
You can conclude that sentence if you'd like.
That we can, that we can create the rigor that's important, for example, to the faculty member, and create inclusion at the same time. And how exciting is that?
Okay. Now, Garen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wright, can you reread that question to me?
Sure. So, in your experience, could you tell me about a time, sorry. Glenn usually does that for me when I fail to turn the mic on. In your experience, could you tell me about a time when you've had to navigate discussion between or among peers or colleagues with differing opinions, and how you might manage to gain consensus?
So, the first thing that comes to mind, I mean, this last few years have been almost nonstop problem-solving and, and conflict resolution. Community members, families, and parents, teachers. In our job as the technician and, and engineers of a mobile future for kids, it's been very, very difficult. The first thing that I've always had is empathy. Empathy is, I, I always feel both sides. And I know that that's a difficult part to connect with, but I empathize with the kids. I empathize with the parents. I empathize with both sides that want to have everything. And from that, I'm able to be, to boil out some of the truths. Listening is a major part of that, of course, as everybody else has said. But if you're, if you can be empathetic about where they are, what they're coming from, you know, for an example, I would love to hear the media stop using, you know, Senator such-and-such, Republican. The minute you put that nameplate on somebody, we are biased to listeners. And I, I want to ensure that I don't do that, so I go out of my way to empathize with where they're at, try to put myself where they're at. And why, I, I've got hundreds of examples where we've been successful, and I think our community knows how successful we were here recently. I'll leave it at that.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Bill Whitman gets the next question from Francis.
Thank you. So you've, you've heard references related to the city's goals. I'm interested in yours. So what would you say are your three most pressing concerns with the city? And related to that, what are the challenges related to each one? Bill, I'll let you start it off.
Do you, you have, you have to level it to three.
I think a goal that I'd like to see is some more work on, on the mobility and transportation flow in the city. I've driven motorcycles and cars and semi-trucks through Pullman. And other than Portland, Oregon, it's probably the worst place to navigate in the Northwest. And I, and I appreciate with the, with the plan for downtown, when they did the experiment with changing the flow of traffic. I, I think that's good. But a few things are physical obstacles, like putting the little islands out in the middle of the street and moving the curb out so that a rig bigger than a Volkswagen can't make a corner, you know? So I'd like to see that. And then, and then walking. I walk a lot, and, and the pathways in Pullman are excellent, but the downtown sidewalks and the residential sidewalks need some work. I'd like to see some help in the community with introducing or encouraging new and different types of businesses into town. I think that's important. It's kind of exciting, the, the concept with the steam plant down there and kind of building a little incubator kind of facility right now. But I, I wish them success, but that's a pretty huge project. And, and I think that that's a good thing for the community to be involved with. So that would probably be my number two.
You've got 10 seconds for number three.
Okay. I'll, I'll go with two.
Okay.
I think the master plan is important, maybe because it's so exciting, but I think it's really important. And I think the, the communications director, one of, one of the city's goals in communicating with the community, I think that's really important. And I think getting that communications director to work with groups within the city, so that citizens- so that citizens do feel informed, you know, so that when you say the master plan, we all go, oh, yeah. You know, I can't wait for the outdoor seating, you know, the more- I can't wait to have a beer at Rico sitting outside and a semi does not come rumbling by. I think that's really important, the way that is communicated. I have to say, too, I have some concerns about housing in Pullman and people who do not have houses. I know this council, council member Weller in particular, has spoken about heating, you know, refuges for people during the colder weathers. And I'm also concerned, you know, sitting on Parks and Rec, sometimes I hear conversations about, well, we have some encampments and we've got to move them. But where do these people go? Like, how do we treat them like people and where do they go? So I guess it would be those three, is one, carrying out the master plan, communication between the city and its citizens, and then housing issues.
I would agree with all three of those. I think it's imperative that we get the Northern Bypass working. It's one of the only ways we're actually going to get the traffic out of downtown. Obviously, the terminal is the next big step. Actually, it's before the Northern Bypass. And I believe there are opportunities there that we need to take advantage of, like a shipping terminal out of the airport. I think that would be a wonderful benefit for the city, definitely a benefit for Switzer. I would, I'm actively working with the Pullman, I'm sorry, the Palouse Performing Arts Fund to develop a fund for performing arts here. And a massive improvement of Gladish, which is on the works right now. We're looking at $6 million program to build a performing arts center in Pullman at the Gladish. I think that's imperative. I think adding to the culture of Pullman is going to be a huge draw for our city. I would love to see a parking structure, part of that future plan at Gladish is to develop a three-story parking structure in front of Gladish with playground on top. It's a great idea. I think it's a very doable idea, and I think it's a huge benefit to downtown. I'll put those down. I would also, let me add one more thing. Housing is obviously a critical need here, affordable housing. I have two staff members who have recently struggled to purchase a house and the costs are outrageous. And it's so difficult for young people to find housing. We definitely need to address some form. Now, that's a miracle. If we had that answer, everybody would be dancing right now. I recognize the challenge, but we do need to take action somewhere there, so. Thank you.
Melissa.
Well, those are all things that absolutely need to be addressed. So I guess if I have to pick three, I think the traffic is a big problem. And mind you, I've lived in places where the traffic was horrible and it took, you know, hours to get from point A to point B. But I think, you know, I'm not complaining on that level, but I think there's a few things that we really need to address. You know, we have all these new developments up by Center Street, and we haven't really improved, you know, the Wowie Road, you know, coming into town or coming down Center Street. Like, those are congested points now where maybe we need to look at some sort of, you know, lights, something. And why, oh, why, when you go past, as always, towards Moscow, is the right lane, not right turn only? I would like to know that. I think, though, that the traffic revision for our expansion and the ways that we're developing, you know, we need to improve those for sure. Gosh. Sorry. I think that the traffic is a huge thing. I think that revitalizing, you know, retail, and not just in downtown, but all over Pullman. You know, we let everything go to Moscow and we've got nothing left. And the college has a lot of dollars on the hill that stay on the hill or go out over the internet into Amazon now. And of course, that's a phenomenon everywhere, but with the demographic of the age, you know, we need to keep as much of it as we can. And I think something that succeeds and fails, as with every semester, we get a new population and something different. I think we just need to continue to really push the university and the city working together. And at times, we've succeeded wonderfully and at times, it's fallen flat. And I think it has everything to do with the way the wind is blowing. You know, a semester, you have different people and it changes all the time. But we really need to get a better foothold on how the two of us can somehow work together. Because I think too often, we're divided into two places when we shouldn't be.
Okay. Now, we're going to start one more, at least one more round. And this time, we'll start again with Megan. And the answers now are going to be one minute in length, that's your max. Okay? So, Megan?
Hi, Rebecca. Well, I'm happy to hear many of you talk about housing as a priority because that is something that I think should be a priority and I'm interested in pursuing that. So happy to hear that that is something that you're all interested in as well. I'm going to, again, ask a pretty basic question. Being the newest member up here, I had a lot of people ask me, why do you want to run? Why do you want this position? So if you could answer that.
Honestly, I just want Dan to stay, but I've tried a lot and he's not going to, apparently. And so, I mean, actually, that's kind of really the heart of it. I would be out there campaigning for Dan, you know. But without him, I see there's an absence, or at least what Dan brings, that diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's really important to me that people in town have that voice. And so, it's actually taken quite a bit, if I'm honest with you. It's been a very long week preparing for this. But I do see it as service. And that's why, is because I think Pullman needs it. And I don't think that I have, I've taken so much from the city that I owe.
Okay. One minute. Garen?
So I ran against Dan six years, or four years ago, sorry, and lost by six votes. It was 11, but every vote against you would have been for me. So, and I was ready to run then. I didn't contest that vote because Dan is a good guy and I appreciated what he said. I think we look on a very similar page. Why am I running? Yeah, I have a couple of things I would like to see get done. One of them is, I'd like to look deeply into a skill center here in Pullman. I want to build opportunities for our kids that aren't going to be scheduled for heading to college. Give them a second pathway that they can be successful in. That's one. The Gladish Performing Arts Center is a huge one. I'd love to see that go. I think we need more public art and-
And that's one minute.
Got it. Thanks.
Got it. All right. Melissa.
You know, I felt, I don't know if I would have put my name in had I known that these wonderful people would have. But this is a closed process, you know. And I knew that I needed someone to be in there that, you know, first of all, someone at all. But I trust myself and I thought, well, what happens if only one person applies? And it's just because, you know, and none of us would have chosen them. So I threw my name in the ring because I've, you know, I grew up being involved in a lot, a lot of service organizations. And then I ended up in a lot of jobs where the work was really hard and the pay wasn't a lot and I didn't have the energy. And I certainly didn't have the time, given the hours that I had to work. And now I've come out of that into an adult job and I just feel like it's, you know, it's time now for me to be a part of those things that I always, you know, was active in and involved in as a child. And, you know, my family's been in Pullman or in the area since the 1860s.
And there's the one minute, right there. Okay. Bill?
Okay. Very good. First of all, thank you for considering my application. I wanted to do this because I've literally lived in Pullman all but a couple of years of my life. And I've worked here in farming, agricultural, obviously, and in retail business and in public safety. And I'm retired now and I have some time. And I feel like I'd like to be able to contribute back to the community that's done a lot for me and my family.
Okay. Anne, your next question, and it goes to Garen first.
Thank you. What have you done more recently to prepare for the role of a council member?
Well, in the last five years, I've been on the Pullman 2040 co-chair. And engaged prior to that, of course, I was planning commissioner. The last two years, I've been buried head down in keeping our kids safe and healthy and educated at a distance. And that's a time-consuming event. I have been reviewing city council, past city council videos and so forth, which, by the way, is a significant improvement over years previous. I appreciate the effort, the direction that that's gone. I am deeply engaged in a lot of events and community processes here in town. And that keeps your ear to the grindstone. So I am targeted to hit those kind of things. Thank you.
Melissa? And I'll just raise my hand in the last 10 seconds. How's that?
Oh, I don't know that I've done anything specifically. I spend all day working with people in the community. That's all I do. I mean, today alone, I helped at least a half a dozen nonprofits today. I mean, that's what I do. So I think, you know, my preparation has just been that I am continually working with people in the community and getting to hear what are their concerns and knowing what, you know, people are thinking about just through talking to them and seeing, you know, what kinds of needs they have. So I don't know that I've done anything specific, but I think what I do all day, every day, has, you know, really kind of prepared me to be aware of the needs that we have and the ways we can assist those needs.
Okay. Bill?
I have not done anything specific for this position, though I do have experience in committees and groups and leadership management. I'm currently the president of the Colton Booster Club. I live in Pullman, but I know. I have history out in the county. And I volunteer with the Whitman County Historical Society. I'm on the state board of directors for the Washington State Trap Shooting Association, represents 200 clubs and about 2,000 members. So, and that's an administrative position. I was representative for Pullman Regional Hospital on the East Region Healthcare Coalition. And I was president of the East Region EMS Council for a couple of years before I retired from the fire department. So I've got a lot of experience, but not specifically in preparation for this position.
Can I clarify the question? Is that what we've done in the recent week? Did I mishear that? More recently. Well, in the past few years, I reached out and asked to serve on the Friends of New York Public Library on Parks and Rec. I've kind of upped my participation in town. Because I guess I always kind of had an eye that if needed, I would run. Hopefully, I won't be needed, was kind of my approach. But I did that to prepare for it. And then in the recent weeks, I have watched, I think, every council meeting in the past year. I downloaded the master plan. I had looked at it before, but I downloaded it and read it and marked it up. I looked at the city's goals and just kind of did a homework on the position.
Nathan? And first question goes to Melissa.
Thank you. Melissa, after the last philosophy question, this one is a bit of a softball. So we've been asked by a number of different agencies when they come in and they do economic work and so on. So here's some that they ask, and I'll just do one. What is the best and worst thing about Pullman? I didn't hear that. What is the best and what is the worst thing that you feel about Pullman? Trend?
What is the best and worst thing about Pullman?
Oh.
I think the best thing about Pullman is how safe I feel and how much of a community it feels like, but how we're not isolated culturally or stifled by that size. You go to other towns of our size and they're listening to music that's 15 years old like it's brand new. And they're wearing clothes that are 20 years old and their slang is 20 years old. And it's amazing to me because we have such an influx of people all the time that are coming from big cities and other countries, you know. And in that way, we get to be in the front of those movements. But we still get our safety and the security we have of being in a small place where we all know each other. But I think, you know, when it comes to the thing I dislike the most about it, when I think of Pullman, I always think of the line that Dorothy says in The Wizard of Oz, and that's that people come and go so quickly here.
Okay. Bill Whitman?
Oh, gosh. You know, the best thing is that all the opportunities that we have for entertainment and recreation and education and, you know, it's just, there's so many opportunities that there's nothing that you can't do here. You can go to plays and concerts and sporting events. And there's almost too many of them because if you want to go to high school, then it's the same time as there's a university event. It's too much of a challenge. And then all the parks and all the resources that we have are just absolutely wonderful. The worst thing right now is the weather and COVID, I think. You know, I'm tired of that and I think it's worrying on the community, too. And I start to see it when I'm out in the community, that people, and I know we can't change that, but, you know, put a smile on and try to get through it.
I think it's the same thing. I think it's inclusion. I've lived here longer than I've lived anywhere else and I feel so at home here. I know so many people and feel so connected. For me, that is the best thing. This is my home, but I know that does not extend to everyone. I know there are housing issues. I know the public schools deal with kids who are in need. I know, again, with the diversity, equity, and inclusion, that not everyone here feels completely included. And I would say that is the downside, that, you know, we have so much to offer. I've taken advantage of so much of it, my family has. But I would love for more people in our community to be able to access what we have.
So on the Pullman 2040 Committee, years ago, we asked a very similar question of our community. And the answer was, the thing that people like the most here is game day. The thing that people hate the most here is game day. We have, sorry, I should have started my clock. We have a hometown feel here that everybody wants and wants to keep. And yet, we have a business need that needs to grow. And there's a conflict that is constant. We need to navigate those waters. I love the downtown feel. I like the fact that it's walkable and that I can circumnavigate the city. I would love to avoid streetlights. I'd like to see a lot of roundabouts, you know, that'll make the traffic flow a little bit easier. So am I down?
You still, you had about 10, you have a total of 10 seconds. Have you got one thing left to go?
No. I'll leave it at that. That's good.
All right. Eileen, next question, and it'll go to Bill first.
My fellow councilmembers have, excuse me, my fellow councilmembers have pretty much covered what I was going to ask about, so I'll pass.
All right. Then Pat? Bill still gets the question.
So you're going to sense a common theme here in some of my questions. But believe it or not, occasionally, we have differing opinions that involve city staff, volunteers, and council. Please describe for me, if you would, how you would address those differences using examples from similar situations, as well as how you view the roles of each of those groups and their interactions.
And again, move your mic real close and make sure it's on.
Yeah, I think if there's a conflict or disagreement, you know, you have to try to facilitate that by making sure that you define what the issue is and that then there's agreement on that. Because you can't resolve it if you can't- Because you can't resolve it if you can't agree on what the problem is to start with and make sure that you get the input from everyone that's involved in the process. The other thing is with that, that that's really a private issue many times, too, and it's not something that you want to do in an open forum. If it's just between a couple of people or a staff member and a supervisor, you know, somehow you've got to get that into an arena where you can deal with it and they're comfortable with it, not out in the, on the street corner or in the middle of the council meeting, that type of thing.
Thank you. I do think there's a lot of listening that goes on, and probably a lot of it outside of official meetings, looking to understand the differing perspectives so that we can consent on a general idea. For me, that has to do with understanding the differing concerns and acknowledgement of people. For example, the volunteers who work. I think that they're, like us, are contributing their time and energy, need to be acknowledged for that, as well as educated. I think this is the role where the council can step forward and educate people, too, because sometimes the misunderstandings happen because of assumptions or because of a lack of understanding of city rules or laws that we have to follow. So I think there would be a lot of work happening outside of the meeting to bring us all together so that even if it's not our favorite idea, it's something we can all live with.
I'm going to ask you to repeat that question. I apologize. My time in the Air Force injured my hearing, and I am not hearing very well here.
No worries. Occasionally, we have differing opinions that would involve city staff, volunteers, and council. Please describe how you would address those differences using examples from similar situations, as well as how you view the roles of each of those groups.
So I attended some training several years ago on EMS, Emergency Management Systems, where one of our challenges with disasters is that you have tons of people that spill out of the community that want to volunteer and help. And as has been noted, communication is a huge part of that. We also have policies and rules that limit what we can do and what we can't do. That makes it fairly easy. My time on the planning commission was fraught with similar situations where we had two arguing groups battle-necked together, and ultimately, it comes down to code and policy and legislation. So listening to both sides and being empathetic about what their needs are and trying to cut through emotion is the fastest route to success. Thank you.
Melissa?
Going forth on this one is a little difficult because I feel that we all have pretty similar ideas about conflict resolution. You know, I think in this instance, you know, getting people to talk and communicate is first and foremost. And, you know, beyond that, I think there is existing, you know, codes and rules, as Garen was saying, and there's probably some sort of hierarchy that, you know, unfortunately, if you can't find a resolution, there probably is a chart that tells you exactly who wins the fight. But I would think that hopefully, that would be the last resort, you know, and that just by getting people to communicate and talk, you can come to the, you know, safer, fast, I wanted to say soft, excuse me, but come to, you know, a resolution that satisfies everybody.
Our last question from Frances, and we'll start with Rebecca on this one.
So hopefully, mine's pretty simple for you. If you're elected to council, what are you going to give up in order to be able to spend the time on council?
Yeah, this is a great question. Definitely Tuesday nights, but I think I'm going to have to restructure my week. My understanding are, is that documents, council receives the documents on Thursday evening. And so from Thursday until Tuesday, setting aside some time that focuses on preparing on those documents, making sure I understand them, reaching out to talk to people when I don't understand them to ask the questions. I think that's going to come right out of my writing time, if I'm honest with you. That's what I see right now.
I would say countless hours of YouTube is what I would give up. I typically don't get a lot of sleep. I get up at 5:00 and I go to bed at 11:30, 12:00 most nights. So as far as being prepared, I'm ready to step in and do what it takes. It's a lot of study and a lot of research. It is a commitment of time, and that's something that I have. That's not going to be a challenge for me, so I'm willing to give up my time. It's my most precious commodity, and I'll donate it to you.
Well, fortunately, for the first time in decades, I leave work at 4:00, and at 4:01, I get to turn off my lights and lock the door. So I'm actually free at night, and, you know, maybe I'll read one less book at home or, you know, do one less load of laundry, but I definitely think that I don't have to give anything up. I may have to rearrange things and watch a DVR instead of a live show, but I think I have the time to fit it in, and the hope is I don't have to give up anything at all.
Let's see, what am I going to give up? Other than my sanity, I'll have to give up my position as the president of the Colton Booster Club. I'm sure I'll probably still be a board member, but it's a conflict in scheduling. It's the same night and time, and that's okay. I don't feel like I'm giving up. I feel like it's going to be a new challenge if I am accepted into the position. And being retired, I'm very flexible with my time. It's just the wife and I at home and kids and grandkids that we have to chase around, but other than that, I've got time and look forward to being able to help out if I can.
All right, we want to thank all four candidates. And this time, so just so you understand, we're going to go into an executive session and discuss the answers and where the council leans on this. So at this time, the city council will adjourn to an executive session pursuant to evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to an elective office. However, any interview of such candidates and final action appointment of a candidate to elective office shall be done in open session, which we will do as soon as we come out of it. Executive session is expected to last, will start at 10 minutes, and if we have to extend, we will extend it at that time. So at this point, let's give ourselves a minute to get into the next room over here. We're going to executive session for at least 10 minutes. So we'll do that at 8:18.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After much deliberation, I would feel, I would motion that we accept Rebecca Dubin as the other representative for Ward Two.
Second.
Second.
Second from Pat. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Rebecca.
Welcome aboard.
Okay. We'll put her, get your name tag up here. We want to thank the other candidates who are here. We thank Dan, who did an excellent job in that ward. And we appreciate, and we're going to be probably in contact with some of the other ones here to make sure we keep you involved with city business. Now Dee, at this point, needs to swear in Rebecca, so we make sure that we have it done right. And you have a microphone nearby, so we can at least hear that, please?
Thank you.
I state your name.
I, Rebecca Dubin.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the State of Washington.
That I will, thank you. That I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the, oops, I'm ahead. I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the office.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the office.
For the City of Pullman as councilmember.
For the City of Pullman as councilmember.
According to law, to the best of my ability.
According to law, to the best of my ability.
You are now officially sworn in, and you can sit at the chair. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is for the council to decide who the mayor pro tem is and the alternate mayor pro tem. Dee has submitted a list to you of where they have been, and so I think you've had a chance to look at who's moving up and who hasn't been on for a while, and you've probably had a discussion. So do I hear a motion as to who the mayor pro tem is and who the alternate mayor pro tem might be?
Can we have some discussion regarding?
Yes, you certainly may. Go right ahead.
All right. I guess I'll start that off, if that's all right, Mr. Mayor. So looking at the history regarding it, Eileen and Pat, I would say, were the ones longest. And I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I know traditionally, it's usually someone who has been experienced in that role before, and then someone who is new to the position as well. Given that this is a unique situation with Francis Benjamin also having served as a mayor pro tem in the past, provides some different questions. But that's what I would feel. I would love to hear other people's discussions regarding it.
Others? Other comments?
So are you proposing anybody in particular?
Not proposing. I'm really discussing.
Just discussing right now, okay? Others on the list, as you see?
I agree with Nathan's assessment that Eileen and Pat have been the longest, the least, what am I trying to say?
Who have not served.
Who have not served.
Most recently.
Most recently, thank you. And then having a newer member as the, as the alternate, I agree with that.
Well, you've mentioned three names, so I mean, the newer, yeah, that. So anybody else? Comments?
So I guess I will just suggest that Eileen serves as mayor pro tem, and then, what's that?
Megan.
Megan, yeah. Sorry, I thought you said you had something else to say regarding it. No, I know, Megan. Serve as the alternate mayor pro tem. That would be my suggestion.
That's your motion? Do I hear second?
Second.
Okay. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That item is now taken care of. We now move to item number three on the agenda tonight, and that's the confirmation of appointment and reappointment of the Library Board of Trustees. And I know that we have a council member who serves as, acts official on that, and I know that you were part of the interview process, Ann. Is there any comments that you would like to make?
No, we had a resignation, and several applicants applied for the position, and all the interviews went well, but Ms., Dr. Donna Potts came out on top as our candidate that we are putting forth as a recommendation to fill that vacant position.
And so what normally happens with the Library Board, they make a recommendation to me. I go over all the candidates, and I agreed with this recommendation. So I am recommending to you that Donna Potts be confirmed for the Library Board of Trustees, and this time, we entertain a motion to support that.
So move.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And now with that, we go to the consent agenda items, and Mike will be reading that tonight. We want you to know that we do have our city attorney.
Mayor?
Yes.
There's a second Library Board member needing confirmation on there.
For reappointment.
A reappointment of Mary Jane Neal.
Mary Jane Neal.
Okay, well, we got this one taken care of. The other, would you like to, Ann, would you like to do that in place?
Yes, thank you, sorry. I would, I'd like to move to reappoint Mary Jane Neal, Mary Jane Neal, to fill a term expiring December 31st, 2026.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike, for bringing that up, and I assume you're reading the consent agenda tonight?
I guess I am.
You are? Laura's here by someplace. She's listening to everything we're saying.
I can certainly do it, Mayor.
Yes, see, I just want you to know that Laura's there. And if I see her face appear on that screen, we know that she wants to say something. There she is, just to prove everything. You know, when we looked at the weather.
I'm happy to read it if you would like, Mike.
You can? Okay. Well, let's, you know, we're getting all the big bucks from you, so let's just do that. Some, that gives Mike a break. So go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Your consent agenda consists of a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 14, 2021, and approve them as submitted. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 105200 through 105218, electronic transfers 41, 42, 793, and 799 through 806. Payroll check numbered 74924, payroll direct deposits numbered 73148 through 73524, totaling $1,560,138.15. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 105219 through 105261, totaling $2,861,567.34. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 105262 through 105271, electronic transfers 43, 44, 807, and 809 through 812. Payroll direct deposits numbered 73525 through 73863, totaling $934,675.75. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 105272 through 105402, totaling $1,024,767. A motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 105403 through 105440, totaling $82,658.37. A motion to approve the transfer of sales tax revenue to CIP Reserve Fund for 2021, quarter four, in the amount of $393,521. A motion to accept the sanitary sewer replacement 2021 contract as complete. A motion to approve an administrative services contract with the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport for 2022. A motion to accept the shoreline master program in our local agreement. And resolution number R-1-22, a resolution declaring certain property of the city of Pullman to be excess and surplus property and authorizing the means of disposal.
Is there any item the council would like out for discussion? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of items one through 11. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we now move to the regular agenda tonight. And our first is a motion to approve a Pullman Police Officers Guild Support Services Employees Agreement. Our Human Relations Director, Human Resources Director, who's in charge of all personnel issues, Heidi Evans. Okay?
Great. Good evening, council and city residents. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present to you tonight. As Glenn stated, my name is Heidi Evans, and I'm the Human Resource Manager here for the city. I am presenting the 2022 through 2024 labor contract and subsequent budget amendment for the Pullman Police Guild Support Services Employees. Like was presented late last year for fire and uniform CBAs, city staff is bringing both the contract and necessary budget amendments to the council for consideration this evening. I would like to thank Tracy Anderson with the Public Safety Labor Group, and Pullman Police Officer Guild's representatives, Scott Patrick, Alex Gordon, T.J. Cornish, Josh Sanders, Ruben Harris, also Police Chief Gary Jenkins, Commander Jake Opken North, and Kevin Wesley with the Wesley Group, for all of their hard work and cooperation throughout this process. It truly was a collaborative effort. The Pullman Police Officers Guild for Support Services ratified this contract as presented on Tuesday, January 4th of this year, and staff is asking that council do the same. In a separate motion, staff also recommends approving the ordinance as presented. I will open the floor at this time to address any questions that you may have, and thanks again.
Any questions? No questions? Then first of all, we have by motion, and then we'll do the, ratify the contract, and then we'll do the ordinance. So do I hear a motion on the first part?
Move to adopt.
Okay.
Second.
Move in seconded. It's a motion to ratify the labor contract with the Pullman Police Officers Guild Support Services Employees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is to adopt the ordinance 22-1, amending the ordinance. Do I hear a motion on that?
Move to adopt ordinance number 22-1, the first of the year.
Second.
Second. Laura, do you want to read that?
Certainly, Mayor. Ordinance number 22-1, an ordinance amending ordinance number 20-11, City of Pullman, for the biennium 2021 through 2022, relating to the 2022 to 2024 Pullman Police Officers Guild Support Services Collective Bargaining Agreement.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two on the agenda tonight is an ordinance. RJ Lott will be presenting this, something that has been under discussion for, I don't know how many years, but to modify and get sort of modern, like many other cities have gone, with a hearing examiner. I don't want to take all the thunder away from RJ, but it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council, and welcome new councilmembers. Staff looks forward to working with you. This item before you this evening is the creation of a hearing examiner and the removal of the Board of Adjustment. If you're not familiar with the Board of Adjustment, it is a volunteer seven-person board that hears applications such as variances, special permits, as well as appeals of administrative decisions. Other cities in Eastern Washington, with similar characteristics to Pullman, such as Wenatchee, Moses Lake, and Richland, have adopted a hearing examiner ordinance, and this is to increase services timeliness and reliability to their communities. If you're unfamiliar with a hearing examiner, they are generally an individual who has experience in land use decisions, such as a land use attorney. The hearing examiner would hear the same applications as the current Board of Adjustment. With the creation of a hearing examiner, the following issues regarding the Board of Adjustment would be alleviated. There'd be no further issues with having a quorum, thus assuring timely decisions. It would have a greater ability to avoid conflicts of interest. Decisions would be based on legal perspectives. There'd be reduced likelihood of appeals or litigation based on a decision-making process rooted in a purely legal perspective. If approved this evening, a hearing examiner contract would need to be, would need to be executed. At this time, it's not known what the annual cost or fee for a hearing examiner would be, but I would estimate it to be at about $5,000 for the remainder of 2022. This would be funded by the professional services in the existing approved budget for the Planning Department. I would solicit interested parties to become the hearing examiner, like I said, for the remainder of the calendar year, and the City Code 1.107030 has a provision that would allow the mayor to enter into these types of minor contracts. Are there any questions of the council that I could answer?
Questions? Seeing none?
Just one comment. $5,000 a year sounds very, very reasonable, and I know how cumbersome some of these committees are. We'll probably save money in terms of administrative staff time and all like such.
It would depend on when the meetings would be held. If they're going to be, continue to be held in the evening, we would continue to staff those if they would be held during normal working hours. That would obviously reduce extra staff time. So if we could shift that from the evening to the day, then yes, there would be additional savings.
Thank you.
In terms of appeals and staff time involved with that, this also would negate some of those appeals, perhaps, when you have legal.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm sorry. The reduced likelihood of appeals or litigation down the road would certainly be minimized with a $5,000 contract, you know, give or take.
Any other questions? If not, do I hear a motion on item number two?
Move to adopt ordinance 22-2.
Second.
Move in second. Laura, would you read that, please? The ordinance 2022.
Ordinance number 22-2, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pullman, Whitman County, Washington, removing the Board of Adjustment from the city's decision-making bodies and establishing a hearing examiner system, repealing Pullman City Code Chapter 17.15, and Pullman City Ordinance Numbers 03-33, Section 3, 2003, 01-5, Sections 4 and 5, 2001, and a portion of 87-9, Section 1, 1987, amending Pullman City Code Sections 17.05.020, 17.20.020, 17.20.070, 17.18.5.030, amending Pullman City Ordinance Numbers 21-15, Section 6, 2021, 21-9, Section 1, 2021, 14-12, Section 1, 2014, 14-4, Section 1, 2014, 07-9, Section 3, 2007, 03-33, Sections 1 and 66, 2003, 02-32, Section 1, 2002, 01-5, Sections 1 and 6, 2001, 00-8, Section 1, 2000, 00-3, Section 1, 2000, 99-49, Section 1, 1999, 96-19, Section 1, 1996, 87-9, Section 1, 1987, adding Pullman City Code Chapter 1.22, Hearing Examiner, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
And thank you, Laura. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number three tonight is a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement. Sean Colts, our Public Works Director, is here.
Good evening, Mayor and council, and give me a moment to switch to the presentation mode here.
Switching on to one here.
Okay. So to give a brief overview of this item, we've got Welch Comer, our consultant team that will give part of this presentation tonight, and with us are Phil Boyd, as well as Matt Gillis. We don't have all of the consultant team members with us tonight, but Phil and Matt will represent the team. We'll go through a background of the project to date and talk about next steps. So background of project to date, City Council approved issuance of a request for proposals to select a consultant for the design work on August 24th, 2021. Welch Comer engineers were selected to design the project. That was October 12th. Adoption of the downtown master plan occurred on October 26th. And then lastly, the Phase Zero data collection effort contract was approved with Welch Comer on November 16th. So we've essentially spent the last couple of months doing that data collection effort. And I wanted to pull a quote out of our downtown master plan that was approved, and that is downtown Pullman's major stakeholders. Many civic organizations in the community were engaged throughout the process of developing the downtown master plan. So essentially, we're taking this vision, and we're taking that down to ground level. So we're getting to the really exciting part here, and that's, that's what we're hoping to present here in Phase One. So with that, I'd like to invite Phil Boyd and Matt Gillis to talk about the recent efforts for data collection and how that leads onto the next step.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name's Matt Gillis, and I presume you can see my screen per Sean's request, yeah. My name's Matt Gillis, and I presume you can see my screen per Sean's request, yes, to run the presentation from our end. As Sean mentioned, you turned us loose or authorized us to start a pretty robust data collection phase, which we call Phase Zero, and I'm going to discuss just very quickly the traffic portion of that, and then Phil will discuss the survey portion of it. So we started out with a 12-intersection simultaneous traffic count right at the beginning of December, right before it snowed, and so we're very fortunate to get some good traffic data. The way we collected that data, all at the same time, is we set up video counts or video cameras on utility poles or illumination poles, and those cameras counted everything at the same time. And the still image is grainy, and the video is grainy purposely because it allows us to collect the data, see the vehicles, the pedestrians, and the bicycles without any facial recognition or license plate. So it's pretty sanitary, but very, very valuable. When we collected all that data, we were able to put it through a fancy software that helps us understand several very valuable things. One, after a 24-hour data collection phase, we can understand a couple key elements. One is our peak hour. So in the morning, we typically have a rush of traffic, and in the afternoon, we have a rush of traffic, and we use both of those as a design tool. And within each of those peak hours, we're able to look at detailed intersection movements. So we can see the volume of the cars and the direction that the cars travel at each intersection. We can see the percentage of trucks in each direction they go, same for pedestrians and bicycles. So real good stuff that'll come in very handy as we move into the Phase One. Another tool that will be valuable in making decisions down the road is what we call big data. So all of us contribute to big data if we drive around with our cell phones, our GPS in our car, or our Apple Watch. We're providing data to somewhere, but we're able to purchase that data in a very sanitized and washed manner, so we don't know any detail about anybody, but we're able to use that to trace vehicles. So we can take a vehicle that might enter the east side of town, and we can figure out where they're going. Do they exit town to the north, to the south? What are the general travel patterns? And you can imagine that becomes pretty valuable, especially when we start asking ourselves, okay, of the vehicles traveling through town, how many are just blown right through town, and how many are stopping? Because that's a big distinction, and we would treat that traffic in a unique manner, and it could help with decisions down the road with bypasses and other types. So that's just a quick overview of the traffic, and I think Phil's going to move right into the survey, so I'll stop sharing mine. And Phil will share his.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. My name's Phil Boyd. I'm also with Welch Comer Engineers, and I'll be managing the project as the principal in charge, and we've been to council before. These are just a couple of snapshots we wanted to show about Phase Zero. The council might remember, we started out kind of wanting to get into Phase Zero as quickly as we possibly could to avoid having to work in the snow and collect data as much as we could. Obviously, there's been a lot of snow in Pullman lately, so our survey intern has spent some time shoveling curb lines and sidewalks in order for us to collect data. The image on the right here is of Cameron, one of our survey interns, and that's a scanner that we use to scan the face of the buildings in addition to the sidewalks, because we're trying to get high-resolution information. So when we actually get into design-level detail, we'll have that very accurate data in order to be able to properly design the interface of the sidewalk to the building and accommodate ADA standards and matters like that. The curb line and a lot of the other data was collected conventionally. And then one of the other things we also did is we photographed with this, I call it exotic camera because it was expensive, that we use to collect high-resolution images on the street view. And many of you may be familiar with Google Earth. This is an image of Google Earth, a snapshot of it, and you can go up and pull this little man down here and drop him onto a street in Pullman, and this is the image you get out of Google Earth. And you guys know where we're at here is on Main Street westbound. And this is interesting, but you can see that the resolution isn't as high-quality as what we might need. We went through and actually walked with our camera all these routes that you see here, and this is the image that comes off of those photographs. This is actually uploaded to Google Earth. There's a process that we go through, and we're accepted by Google Earth to put this image up there. You can see our logo in the bottom left-hand corner of the screen here. So the advantage of this is anyone we're working with at the city, our design team members that we're working with virtually, we can all go into Google Earth, which is available to you if you have the internet, and literally drop your man on the sidewalk here. So you pull this man down, drop him on the sidewalk near Rico's, and you get this high-resolution photograph here, and this becomes an invaluable method if you're talking to Sean on the phone. We just pull this up and we start looking at it, and so it's a very valuable tool. So we wanted to just, and Sean had asked us to give a little bit of a progress report to council on what we've done on Phase Zero. Moving forward into the next steps, council might remember this image. Where we're at here is the feasibility analysis. Where we're going is construction. So what's on the agenda for council's consideration tonight is this scope of work under Phase One feasibility, where we're moving into the fun stuff, as Sean said. And, you know, the elements, and we've talked about this before, what we're really trying to achieve is what kind of great public space can we create? Because the objective is to make people feel comfortable in downtown Pullman, and so that's one of the primary objectives. Obviously, traffic flow, moving people through the corridor is important, geometric improvements. I heard some of that during the council's interviews tonight with potential council members. Key, key element is economic benefit, and having that in the back of our minds is what we're doing is creating a comfortable space that will drive business and investment in downtown, and then obviously, cost is a key element. The feasibility steps, and this is what we're going to jump right into next, is the science part of it and the art part of it, engineering, architecture, planning, analysis. Bring those to council as a menu, because we know you all have decisions you want to look at, and it's your city, and you need to guide those decisions, then do a community outreach and bringing that feedback to you as well, and then final decision-making process. And just a couple, this is again a refresher, you know, some of the guidance documents, because a lot of this is tried and true, it's customized for every community we work in, but there's certain processes and references you use. The Main Street America is an important element we reference, and this is the area we're in right now is design. The city and the Downtown Association and whatnot will need to do some work in these other areas of organization, economic vitality, and promotion, ultimately for the downtown to be successful, because it takes all four of those elements to be successful. We always talk about it upfront because we want to use the energy that we're experiencing now and move it forward and get people involved in these other elements. So we just don't get to construction, and kind of the energy dies off once we get through that. And then another key reference document we use is the Project for Public Spaces, and this is the wheel that helps us define what makes great places, and we use this to help the dialogue with the council and the community, because it kind of gives everyone some words to point to and talk about rather than having to come up off the top of your head. So those are just a couple of the reference documents. And then finally, the important part here is the schedule. This is right out of the agreement that's on your agenda tonight. We show here beginning in the beginning of February and ending in mid-July. Matt's transportation people are so excited to get work on the transportation parts of this that I imagine they'll be starting tomorrow on it instead of February 1. But these are just the steps we'll be moving through, and I won't go through each one unless council has a question, but we did just want to show you the overall schedule. So with that, Sean, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, and I'll load up the presentation on my machine again. So you've got a resolution before you tonight, but to talk about a little bit of big picture on this, the total cost of this project phase is 386,500. About two-thirds of that work is the engineering analysis, the urban planning, the landscape architecture piece, and putting costs to all those various options that are in the downtown master plan. And a full third of this is also community outreach stakeholder outreach work. So I just really want to acknowledge that this isn't just engineering. This is a massive effort on the community outreach piece. So that's what is embedded in the contract, as you dig into the details of the contract, but from a big-picture standpoint, that's what you're looking at in that number. And with that, we'll take questions.
Questions? Comments? Eileen?
This is probably one of the best documents I think I've seen regarding downtown improvements and what we're going to do and where we're going to go. It's very readable.
Excuse me. This is a great document. It's very readable. I love the way it's laid out. I had a meeting this afternoon with the Design Subcommittee of the Downtown Association, and I had a lot of really good things to share with them, and this document made it really easy, especially the community outreach portions of it. And page 22, where the whole calendar is laid out, is very helpful because not only is it a great calendar, it encapsulates each one of those steps. It gives us kind of a shorthand to use as we go through it. I think we're really getting our money's worth here, and I'm really looking forward to being part of this and seeing what you all come up with.
Any other comments? And with that, do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Yeah, I guess move to adopt.
Moving second. Laura, would you read the resolution, please?
Resolution number R-2-22, a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between the City of Pullman and Welch Comer Engineers for the Pullman Downtown Improvements Project, Phase One, Project Feasibility.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just looking at the way the project lays out and going through what we've been going through at the airport, it, you know, they have Phase Zero, Phase One, Phase Two, and each one was a grant from the FAA, you know, dealing with things like this, so we totally understand that. Sean, thank you for the presentation, and again, thank you, Welch Comer, for the great job you're doing here so far.
Hey, thank you.
And you heard that said "so far," so just keep it going, okay?
Very good. Good night.
Thank you. Next comes discussion items, and before you tonight is a discussion item of a master plan for the transit facility. We have Wayne Thompson and Sean Colts here to present to you tonight, give you some ideas of what they're planning, because number one, we want to get all the buses under wraps as opposed to some of them. Sean?
Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of this item is to get a concept in front of council before we take, get too far down the road on this item and basically get your approval to go forward. And essentially, what we've got in our capital plan in fiscal years '23 and '24 is an expansion of the transit facility, and we'll talk about some of the needs that we have. But what we don't have programmed in '23 and '24 in advance of that is what we call a transit facility master plan, and basically, we're at a point where we really need to define our 20-year needs, our current needs as well as our 20-year needs, before we spend the money to build out a transit facility. So we've got an opportunity here from a funding standpoint, and that is we've got one-time funds that are available to us that are transit-specific to the American Rescue Plan Act, and those funds were awarded to us already. And so what we would like to do is use some of those funds to do this 20-year look ahead, take a look at those facility needs, and, you know, specifically look at, you know, how do we store our buses? Where do we store them? How do we move them through the system? What's the best way to get them to the system? And what are our staff spacing needs? With that, I'll have Wayne Thompson come up and give a brief history of the facility that is there, just to give an indication of the need.
Thank you, Sean. The photo you see is a fairly recent view of our facility from Guy Street. Pullman Transit Services have grown rather significantly since the city first constructed the facility in 1986. What we're looking for in a transit facility master plan is to define our current and future facility needs, primarily getting vehicles undercover. We also have some staff spacing needs and equipment storage. We did some preliminary work last summer. That's when we realized, really realized the need for this plan, and what we ended up with here is the starting point with what we're starting with now to house a fleet of 23 buses and five vans. What's shown on your screen as A is our 1986 transit office and garage, and it was built to hold 10 buses, and those are all 35-foot buses. 22 years later, we added B, and that is in addition to hold eight 40-foot buses. Then two years later, in 2010, transit funded what's showing as C, and that's an extension onto the city shop or ERD, and it includes a wash bay, which tonight, if you were to drive by, you would see two buses stored in that wash bay for that short of storage. So since 1986, or even 2008, when we did the second garage addition, our service and facility needs have been far from what you would call static. Our garage holds 18 buses, and we currently have 23 and $5 ride vans, and that's not to even mention the four staff cars or driver break vehicles and a bus washer pickup. Seven of those buses are quite old, they're from the 1990s, and covered storage would certainly help maximize the vehicle lifespan as well as contain leaks. Currently, when we're fully staffed, transit is at 47 employees, and if you would compare these needs to 1986, when this was initiated, our facility, when there are just 17 employees and 10 buses, even the 2008 garage expansion leaves us today with five buses and $5 ride vans out in the open, plus all of the staff cars.
So I'll jump back in here and talk a little bit about floodplain impacts with the facility. So with the preliminary facility expansion work that we looked at this summer, we looked at a couple of options to expand facilities on the existing site, and those are shown here. You know, one is there on the left-hand side where we would build a new facility to store buses, and then another one on the right-hand side is essentially an extension of our ERD building. Now, what I want to point out here is that blue area, it's all in the floodplain, and so if we were to build in that area, we would have to go through a FEMA permitting process that we may not be even guaranteed to get that permit at the end of the day. And not only that, but the potential floodplain impacts of that are such that we would be essentially backing up water in a flood scenario, raising that base flood elevation on all of our existing facilities and on our key facility at the wastewater treatment plant out there in addition to other neighboring properties. So that's something we would really like to avoid, and in this scenario, we may need to look at other locations for our transit facility as opposed to trying to expand within the floodplain. So that's a critical consideration in this, and that's something that we would like our consultant to look at if we advance this. And a few things to point out there, the red line follows the path of the South Fork of the Palouse River, so you of the Palouse River, so you get a real sense of how close our existing facilities are to the South Fork. And in fact, you can see our existing facility today for transit actually encroaches in the floodway, which would not be allowed to be built today under the current regulations. One other consideration here is our industrial stormwater permitting. Given our proximity to the South Fork of the Palouse River, we're about 45 feet from the current bus garage and just 30 feet from the outdoor bus parking area. So we have to be very careful about leaking oils, fuels, other contaminants that could get into the South Fork, and that's something that we monitor. So the ask that we have for you tonight is to approve use of transit-specific ARPA funds to fund a transit facility's master plan. And I'd like to kick off discussion and questions with just a few items here, and that is, what we would do if council approves this is we would issue an RFP for consultant services. We've talked to a few consultants, and the initial estimates we've got are that this study would be about in the $210,000 range. We would return to council with a word for a contract, possibly in the summer of 2022, if not earlier, and then go forward with that work. So again, the intent being to get this work done before we would do a facility expansion that's programmed in our capital plan in '23 and '24. So with that, we'll take questions.
Questions or comments? Go to Nathan, then we'll go to Ann and others.
So, well, first of all, given that transit really is in Pullman's DNA, I would say, one of the most efficient and most-used transit systems, from what I've heard, not only in Washington, but nation. My question is, do you have an idea of where you would put an additional, you know, with it being in the floodplain, before you started talking and looking at this with the majority of, well, all of the buildings in the floodplain? Would all of the facilities be moved from that area to a whole-new site? Is that what you're thinking? Or an extension, so this would be like a Site A versus a Site B somewhere in the future?
Yeah, so what we would like to do is avoid further impact to the floodplain. We would keep the existing facilities there, possibly work within the footprint of those existing facilities, maybe to do upgrades for office spaces, that type of thing. But ultimately, I think the expansion of the bus storage probably falls to another location. And so part of the consultant effort would be to say, okay, you know, here are all your storage needs today, and this is how much space that takes up. Here's all your office space, all your bathroom, break room, those types of needs, and define a footprint. And then they would go out and say, okay, where else could we put that in the community? And that may involve coordination with WSU as well, given that so much of our service is up on WSU. So I ultimately think part of the outcome of that study would be to identify another site for facility expansion. So whether that's moving transit entirely to a new location, or keeping some of the transit in the existing facility, and then having an expansion area in another location, we don't know yet until we do the study. But if we move transit to an entirely different location, we would still want to use those existing facilities for our EMO group.
Okay.
And the consultant would also take a look at the property that the city owns across the street to see if we could also possibly expand over there. Okay? Ann, you have a question?
Thank you. Sean, you said that the estimated cost estimate, excuse me, for the RFP or from the engineers has been about $210,000. How much? What's the amount of the ARPA funds that we are receiving? And if there's more than $210,000, is there a plan for the rest of the funds?
And I'll ask Wayne to give me the exact number. I think it's $770,000 roughly.
$777,000.
Yeah. $777,000 is the amount of our ARPA grant award for transit. So a lot of that is dedicated to make sure that our operations can be maintained at the same level going forward, especially given our challenges with WSU contracting and vaccine mandates. So, yeah, a big part of that money is going to operations.
Great, thank you.
Other questions or comments? And you're looking tonight for council approval to go ahead and go out for the consultant?
To issue an RFP.
And use those ARPA funds for that?
I'm sorry?
And using the federal funds for that is what was part of that motion you wanted?
That's correct.
Okay. If there are no further questions, do I hear a motion on that?
Move to pursue the RFP. It's a good investment.
And use the federal funds to help with a consultant, okay?
Second.
Move to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay? Go forth and find the consultant and find the property. Is there any other new business to come before the council tonight? Seeing none, I hope that people notice tonight, when you look at the council tonight, that it's five to two women over males. That is the first time, I believe, in the history of the Pullman City Council that the majority of the city council members are women. And I think that marks a major move. I think Moscow just has all women now, all women now on their council. So we're getting there, but just...
What do you mean "we"?
All right. So with that, you know, Rebecca, you had to go through all those questions tonight, so how about you get a chance to make the motion to adjourn the meeting?
Can I ask a question, though?
Certainly.
There is, there's a how to introduce new business. Is that...
Well, we've already done that when I said, is there any new business? And I didn't see anything that came forth.
Okay, then I do move that we adjourn the meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned with history.